Welcome to City Council. I'll call the meeting to order and we will begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation this evening is Chaplain Ryan Creelman from the Boulder City Police Department. Please rise.
Hello, I am grateful here, be here today with you. It's my pleasure to respond to the request of invocation for today's recognition ceremony. All good things come from above. Let us pray. Thank you, God, for beginning and finishing good work within all of us. Thank you for the unique skills and talents you've equipped these recognized men today to be of service unto you and for the benefit of their fellow man. Provide wisdom and safety as they navigate new roles and responsibilities as we choose to trust in you. We are confident that your will is being fulfilled today and each day moving forward under your intentional care manifested in those who choose to serve the good. From the firehouse to the force, we the people say, amen.
Thank you Chaplain Creelman for your words. We will now administer the oath of office to two, are we, yes. Okay, I thought I was doing something wrong? Administer the oath of office to two new employees, Fire Chief William G. Gray and Marshal Joel R. Guerrero.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and that I will bear true faith, allegiance and loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, and that I will perform well and faithfully all the duties of Fire Chief and City Marshal of Boulder City Nevada on which I am about to enter. So help me God, under the pains and penalties of perjury. Congratulations and welcome.
Again, we want to welcome both Chief Gray and Marshal Guerrero. I believe that Marshal Guerrero may have come out of our Explorer program, is that right? No, sorry. And Chief Gray is coming to us from Colorado, is that right, Pueblo? Thank you.
Hello, oh, I am on now. His wife is in the back along with his brother as well. If you could please stand? There you go, okay, good, thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you Honorable Mayor and Counsel. And to proceed along with some good news, I also want to take this opportunity tonight to recognize another very special individual who's having a very special day in the next couple of days. And so if everyone in the public along with the staff and the council will help me in celebrating Councilwoman Bridges' birthday, which is actually, I believe, this Thursday coming up, but you know, it's all about celebrating, you know, we're stretching it out for the month. So with that, if on three of you'll sing with me, one, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear. Happy birthday to you.
Very much.
Any comments?
On another anniversary of my 39th birthday, I want to thank everybody and this lovely cake. I forgot. I was really, I was like, whose birthday's coming up? But thank you again, I appreciate it very much.
And I'm sure it's always a coincidence, but we seem to always have a swearing in at these with several fire department personnel here, just in case the candle count gets a little too high for us, so.
It's out.
Well, happy birthday. Our next announcement, a little more serious, but again, I think it's something that the community can certainly rejoice in, that we have individuals here. This is an award to a person who, at risk of themselves, went into a building that was on fire, a home, and helped get one of the victims out. So let me read what the citation is here. "On December 10th, 2019, Boulder City Fire Department responded to a call of a structure fire at 1322 Esther. Upon arrival, the firefighters found thick black smoke discharging from the garage, windows, and front door. Firefighters initiated fire attack and searching for possible victims. One of the firefighter paramedic rescue crews assigned four EMS on scene encountered a patient across the street with smoke inhalation. Upon interviewing the patient and the family from the fire address, we discovered a remarkable story. Marcos Caro had been working on the roof across the street when he noticed the heavy smoke coming from the residence. Marcos quickly made his way down the ladder and across the street to alert the residents. After pounding on the front door and no one answering, Marcos checked the doorknob and found it unlocked. For concern of anyone possibly inside, Marcos entered the house and began to shout out that the house was on fire. Opening interior doors and calling out about the fire, Marcos encountered a woman in the bathtub and alerted her about the need to get out immediately. After a couple of awkward moments, the woman was able to get covered up and assisted out of the home by Marcos. We commend Marcos for his selfless act of heroism and an unknown risk of his own well-being to very possibly save the life of the occupant." And I have a couple of quotes here. "True heroism is remarkably sober, very undramatic. It is not the urge to surpass all others at whatever cost, but the urge to serve others at whatever cost." Excuse me, yes. That's Arthur Ashe, professional tennis player. And also, simply put, then, "The key to heroism is a concern for other people in need. A concern to defend a moral cause, knowing there is personal risk done without expectation of reward." And that's by Philip Zombardo. So again, to Marcus Caro, we thank you for the community, we thank you for the resident whose well-being that you preserved, and if Marcos is here, we'd like you to come up. And on on behalf of Boulder City, Mr. Caro, we want to thank you very much. Again, that's selfless courage, that's the most important kind. Thank you. Is there anything you would like to say?
Yes, I want to say thank everybody, Boulder City, Fox News, my coworkers, my family. Thank the Lord, all to escape that. My biggest fear was probably not seeing my family again, but God had other plans for us, so I'm grateful for that and grateful for everybody. And then one last thing, I think the true heroes here, gentlemen in the back, they do that daily.
And again, we never know when we're called upon, but thank God we do have individuals who, when they see a situation, they react immediately to it. So again, thank you, Mr. Caro. Okay, with that, we will move to our first public comment period. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to items, matters on the agenda. The time to speak will consist of five minutes for each speaker. And again, we always encourage folks to be civil and concise when they speak in public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on public comment for an agenda item? Mr. Sineken?
My name is Neil Sineken, and I wanted to encourage you to go ahead with the introduction for changing the zoning on the filtration plant and the surrounding properties from C1 to Park. I feel it's appropriate. I'm here tonight because I hope that you've watched the Planning Commission meeting that occurred about a week and a half ago. I took great objection to what occurred there and what didn't occur there. And based on what I saw, and hopefully you saw, you will disregard their decision, take what I'm saying into account, and go ahead with the introduction and not be dissuaded by the non-binding recommendation of the Planning Commission. I was going to appeal this. Under Chapter 34, any decision by the Planning Commission is appealable. It doesn't say what kind of decision, it says any decision is appealable. I asked Mr. Mays and Mrs. Crumb for comment to tell me why I couldn't appeal this. Neither of them responded. Mrs. Crumb went so far as to refuse to give me the appeal form, and I again asked her why. She didn't. That's outside of Mrs. Crumb's authority to make legal decisions per the charter, and I wish to make note of that. At the Planning Commission meeting, they didn't read the notices sent out, they didn't read the response from the public, which is customary. The Planning Commission didn't understand the process, people were confused. They thought that by having this as a public hearing and your process wasn't customary and adequate. That's how we do things in Boulder City, and that should have been explained to them. The Planning Commission felt that if you change the zoning, that would block further discussion and further activity on the property. That's not true in any way. The zoning has nothing to do with what the council does with the property. The property can be rezoned to anything based on anything that someone proposes that the council wishes to do. One thing I found objectionable, they didn't understand how the zoning works. Susan said that a park is a conditional use in the C1 zone. That's totally backwards. That property is, has been a park for many, many, many years. It's master planned as a park. To say that it can be a conditional use in a master planned park area is totally backwards. I felt that staff, while not steering the Planning Commission, could have followed your lead in encouraging more direction toward going ahead with historic preservation. We don't have that many buildings left, and if that building sits empty, I would prefer that it do that than turned into a restaurant or a bar or some other use. It's a very valuable and one of the few remaining prime, pristine properties that we have. The master plan, the strategic plan, and your direction all point toward historic preservation. I didn't get that spirit or that direction from the Planning Commission meeting, and that's one of the reasons aside from this that I was going to appeal. Another big issue was findings of fact were not made. You won't find finding of facts, as is customary, in what was turned over to you. To the contrary, I felt that one commissioner that did his best to make finding of fact was discouraged because of the forum he was using, and using a proper forum wasn't explained to him. The master plan, the strategic plan, and your direction all call for this being a park, not to mention that it's been a park for years and years. The C zoning is an error. It conflicts with a residential area around it that wasn't stressed. The people that live there around Birch Cherry and Asher made huge investments emotionally and financially into preserving their homes in that area. It was said that it's partially surrounded by commercial and partially surrounded by residential, but if it ever came to a conditional use, which wasn't discussed, that would be a big issue for the homeowners. People that were there that were proposing a restaurant didn't understand that what they were wanting to do wasn't even permissible even with a conditional use. So because of these errors, I would urge you to set aside anything by the Planning Commission, watch the tape, get them more direction, get staff on board with historic preservation, and set an example that the council is behind historic preservation and the saving and promotion of finding a good use for the building. As for Mrs. Crumb, someone should explain the charter that she has limits and she's not an attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. DeShane?
Judy DeShane. I don't have the fine details that Neil presents, but at the Planning Commission meeting, one of the people that spoke had asked, and I, you know, why does the building have to do anything? Why can't it just be there? It's a gorgeous building. And over the past week, I've been thinking about that comment, and it's true. And I looked around my house, and I'm sure you guys do too, either in your garage with a prized car or motorcycle, or maybe your lawnmower is really important to you. But you have things, all of us have things that don't do anything, they're just there to look at and give us pleasure to look at those things and know that we have this, what we perceive as beauty in our homes or around our homes. So I would just like you guys to consider that, and I think the park designation helps preserve that for in the future. It's going to be, seems like it'd be harder to change it to a commercial or sell it or do anything to destroy it if it's a park designation as opposed to being a commercial. C1 is what it is, and according to what I read in one part of the backup, that is a, it sounds like that's supposed to be for, like attorney offices, doctors' offices, low impact things. So consequently, I think Neil is probably right, a restaurant or a bar or that type of use would not be allowed there. And I think that if we can put it as a park, we can get a lot of citizens with some excellent ideas for what we can use the building for and keep it open and keep it a public property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Glenn Phan, good evening, councils. Mayor, kind of hard to follow up what the previous speakers have said, but I like to think that changing it to a park will protect it. I think by giving it a park status, we can get people in the community, you know, people talk about, well, it's going to cost this much money to fix and do this, that, and the other thing. But I think if the city shows its willingness to convert it to a park and keep it as a park, then I think citizens of this town and stuff like that will get behind any renovation of that building and stuff. We've already had somebody donate a new roof for it, and that before, I'd be in a park. Just think of what can happen if we make it a park, because a few people on a historic committee or whatever has put together some kind of fundraisers, all right, hey, our first thing is, let's have a fundraiser to replace all the windows. You know, sell them off, okay? Hey, a thousand dollar donation, this window, we get a little tiny plaque, donated by. You know, you sell all those windows, now you got a whole bunch of money. Somebody wants to donate paint. I think there's just a ton of ways that that building can be turned around and used by the city and with the people in town getting behind it. It's just a, you know, it's a cool building. You know, if nobody's ever been through it, make sure you get a chance to go through it. But I think it definitely needs to be stated as a park, and I think the citizens of this town would get behind anything that needed to be done to restore that, make it a beautiful place, turn it into a little museum or something like that. It's just the first floor, just a lot of pictures of what's going on, what it looked like before. It'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right, seeing no others, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk? Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
And Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
All right. Council, any changes?
No changes.
Motion for approval?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move to the approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, any changes?
Yes, Mayor, staff's recommending we remove item number six, please, and it will come back at a later date.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
No additional changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
Thank you. Back to City Council, any changes on the consent agenda? A motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Move to item number 10 then, introduction of Bill Number 1868.
I'd like to introduce Bill Number 1868. Read the title only.
Waive the reading.
Waive the reading.
I second. Bill Number 1868, an ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend the zoning map to rezone approximately 1.92 acres at 300 Railroad Avenue from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to GP Government Park, AM-20-345. Bill Number 1868 will be considered at the February 11th, 2020, regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. We'll move to item number 11, our annual land management process, formerly known as the Land Management Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Yes, I'm here to talk about the land management process. Back in 2007, the city adopted an ordinance amending Title 11, which put into place a formal process, a transparent process, to allow the community to be able to evaluate at a very early stage in the process, city consideration of the sale or lease of city-owned property. And so this annual process kicks off every fall with a notice in the newspaper asking for people to submit their requests for consideration for city-owned property to be added to the list. And this comes before the City Council in the fall to receive direction on whether to entertain those requests, and then forwarded to the Planning Commission to get their recommendation regarding the requested additions. And as we've discussed previously, last year in 2019, because there was no formal process for the City Council to look at the removal of items that is on this list, the code was amended to put into place an automatic review of parcels every three years. And so I just want to highlight that we have a current list, this list is on the city's website, showing properties that have been added over the years. It includes the acreage, it includes location information, as well as the year it was added to the list. We also have on the city's website a corresponding map that shows the location of each of these parcels, so that the public can understand which properties have been added to this list. And I want to emphasize that this is the very beginning of the conversation with the city to determine whether to lease or sell property. Obviously, there are other processes that are required, potentially the requirement of rezoning, amendment to master plan, all requiring proper notification, public process and public comment periods, but this is the opportunity at the very beginning of the process for the public to provide comment. And so for your consideration this evening, there are three items attached to this agenda. The first is to hold the public hearing regarding consideration of the 2020 land management process list. Secondly, item B is to consider removing items from the current list. In your packet and on the screen right now shows all of the current items on the list. Staff has highlighted in blue those parcels where there has been interest in the city-owned properties, and so staff's recommending that they remain on the list or they tie into the city's strategic goals. And so the items in blue, staff's recommending retaining on the list, the items in white, staff's recommending be removed from the land management process list. And in addition to that, there was one proposed addition to the land management process list from last fall. This was at the initiative of city staff. This is referred to as Black Hills North, is approximately 1,200 acres, and as you can see on the screen, highlighted in red, this property would be designated for renewable energy uses. And so Resolution 7066 would provide for the addition of this property to the list. So, public hearing and two resolutions for your consideration this evening, and I can certainly answer any initial questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Council? Council Adams?
Yeah, just to clarify, something we discussed during our briefing, but, you know, I noticed that some of the proposed uses differ from those of the master plan use. Could you go over why we see those differences in those uses and why they're making it onto the land management process?
That's a good question, because I think there's some confusion with respect to the public understanding, well, if the land management process list shows a certain use attached to it, well, then that must be what's going to happen with that property. That is not the case. That is the initial consideration by the applicant when they bring it before the City Council. Just because that parcel is added to the list with that land use designation does not mean that the city's going to move forward and develop it in that fashion. Again, in those cases where it differs from the zoning and the master plan, it would require consideration of amendments of both the master plan and the zoning and the appropriateness of those modifications, and that would be further on in the process. This is an opportunity for the public to see with the applicant's intent what they're thinking about for that parcel.
So there are a number of steps ahead of that, should there actually be any consideration for changing the use according to the master plan?
Correct.
Okay. And then my other one, of the list of the recommended to keep on, of the interested parties that are interested, are they, all of the interest is in regards to the proposed use as listed on this list, correct?
With respect to those uses, that is correct at this point.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, and do I understand that if you take them off the list, they can be put back on the list later?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
What would happen is that, one of two things, it could be part of the normal process during each fall where they could be added. Somebody could request separate consideration throughout the year to start the process. But it would come before the council first. The council would decide whether to entertain the addition of that parcel to the list, then on to the Planning Commission, then back to the council for consideration.
Councilwoman Folder?
Thank you. There's approximately four properties that are recommended to be kept on the list that have to do with the land and vicinity of the old airport hangar. Is there any, well, some of these, I know the notes on here say that they're all to remain, are requested to remain because they were part of the recent RFI of the hangar and runway that Council and staff has looked at. However, is there any interest in the original use of when they were put on there? I know, for example, item number seven on the map was added in 2004. Has there been any interest in these specific parcels by the original requester?
Not by the original requester, but with the recent RFI, there have been interests in some of these uses. And it's also a good question for the benefit of the public. So say somebody wants to move forward with a use that's not listed with one of the parcels that's on the list currently. That would require an amendment to the land management process list to change that use before any of the other steps would be considered.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to go back to Councilman Adams' question regarding any potential conflicts between the master plan and proposed use. You know, in the past, this process had gotten to the point of saying that the council could not even consider a proposal for placing a parcel on this list until it was on the list. And I think the work that you did in clarifying what the process is all about negates that. The purpose of this is for the council to consider a proposal to place a parcel on the list as to whether it's appropriate or not. And that can be based on what the master plan is, it can be based on the proposal that's being made. You know, as an example, we went through a proposal last year of having more of the dry lake bed placed on the plan, the list, so that we could consider solar development out there. You know, it was decided at that time that that was not an appropriate use by the Planning Commission. So I think that, I just want to clarify that as these proposals come, whether it's to add or remove parcels, the council does need to consider what is in that master plan, in our city master plan, and consider that in relation to what the proposal itself is. But some things may come to us that obviously are such a conflict with the master plan, they would not be placed on the list. Is that an accurate interpretation, or?
It is at the discretion of the City Council. And you don't even need a reason to say you don't want to add it to the list. You may just feel it's not appropriate for that to be added to the list at that time. But of course, with the component of allowing the Planning Commission to evaluate that proposed use, you can get Planning Commission's input on its appropriateness.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Adams?
I do have one more, just kind of touching on Councilwoman Folder's question. So specifically with the airport hangar, the proposed use is multi-use sports complex, or I guess it says, it does say "or other commercials." So I guess that kind of answers my question right there. But we are in an RFP, or moving towards an RFP process potentially with this. And if there was a difference of suggestion in the use that we were perhaps considering, what is the process then? I think, I believe you said something about an amendment. Is this removed and then later placed again on there with a different proposed use? Could you just kind of go over how that happens?
Sure. So there are two opportunities to modify or add to the list. The first is the regular annual process that starts in September. But an applicant, and say for the example with an RFP, and the council provides direction on the types of uses they're interested with the old airport hangar, and that use is not consistent with the land management process list, then the applicant would be concurrently asking for an amendment to those uses at the same time that they'd be asking for consideration of the RFP.
Thank you for repeating yourself for me.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Thank you, Mr. May. So we will go ahead and open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this? All right, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. At this time then, I guess we're at a point where we can discuss these individual parcels for either inclusion or removal. Any questions or comments beyond the recommendations that city staff has made on the parcels?
I guess, for me personally, as far as removing any of the parcels, you know, I think I'm pretty okay with the ones that staff is recommending to keep. Of all the ones that are listed there, most of them 2003, 2004. You know, we're going on 15 years or more for some of them. I do notice that the 91 acres for near Veterans Home for Special Recreation is also on there. That was 2017, so more recent. But I'm not opposed to having them removed. Or if anybody feels that maybe they should be kept, I could also be fine with that too. So that's where my head's at.
Well, as I recall, that particular project was, started out at 10 acres, suddenly ballooned to 91 acres. And it was going to be some type of, we were going to flood the desert with water and people were going to come into some course that they had to run. And that person, as far as I know, never came back to speak with us. So I don't see much sense in having that on here, so, you know.
I think the dam did a pretty good job of flooding the desert with some water for people to use it.
There's some recreation area down there, I hear. Any other questions or comments? Okay, at this time then, we would need motions on the resolutions then, 7065 and 7066. And with regard to 7065, I would offer the amendment that we would include the 91 acres. Let's see which number that is listed as, number 46 on the list?
Mayor, just a point of clarification, that's already recommended for removal.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's one of the ones.
Oh, it just became eligible, I'm sorry. Okay, so any others then, or everyone is, no additions or deletions then? Beyond what was recommended? I will move then for approval of Resolution 7065 based on the recommendations of city staff.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then Resolution 7066 is the addition of the Black Hills North area.
I move to approve of Resolution Number 7066.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll move then to item number 12. This is Bill 1866 regarding a potential zoning change. Mr. May?
Thank you, Mayor. EB Iron Design has submitted an application to amend Title 11 of the city code to add ornamental iron fabrication as a conditional use to the C2 general commercial zoning district. They are looking to move their business to a property on Walnut Drive that is own C2, which does not currently permit that type of use. In addition to their request, staff is recommending that ornamental iron fabrication be added as a permitted use in the CM Commercial Manufacturing Zoning District to acknowledge that there are several existing businesses of similar type of use that are operating in that district today. The Planning Commission evaluated the applicant's request on December 18th of 2019 and recommended approval of the text amendment. It's important to note that the City Council this evening is only weighing the merits of the proposed text amendment and not the applicant's specific request of the location on Walnut. If the City Council approves the text amendment this evening, the applicant would then proceed to the next step, which would include applying for the conditional use at the Walnut location, which would require public hearing and notification and the public hearing before the Planning Commission so they could evaluate their requests for that conditional use at that location. Therefore, for your consideration this evening, you have the following actions to hold a public hearing and to consider Bill Number 1866 regarding the proposed text amendments to the C2 and the CM zones. And then just as a reminder, that with your emotion, with your motion to approve the text amendments, it should include the two findings that are included on page 207 of your packet. Connie Harris, representing EB Iron Design, is here tonight to describe the proposed use and answer any questions. Connie?
Hi, I'm Connie Harris. I'm the office administrator for EB Iron Designs. And Mike EB, who owns EB Iron Designs, is my son. So let me just say briefly, what brought us to the table in the first place is that we were in the process of trying to purchase 909 Walnut. We had put down our earnest money when we discovered that it wasn't zoned correctly for us. The realtors didn't know it, the seller didn't know it. And that was in large part due to the fact that the owner had been operating as a boat machine repair shop for decades, which is not a permitted use in a C2 zone, but was granted to him years ago by Boulder City in much the form of a conditional use permit, though not officially. So that is why we are here. We think though, after, especially speaking to Michael, we began to realize, okay, well, wait a minute, maybe this will work. Because, and I realize I'm not supposed to speak about the neighborhood, but ornamental iron manufacturing is a manufacturer of a different sort. We are what they call a value-added type of manufacturing. In other words, we take an existing product, steel in our case, and we bend and we weld and we cut it. That's it. We don't make something, we don't process it. There's no chemical transformation, there's no chemical or biological processing. Oftentimes, people think we pour iron into molds to do this. We don't. There's no odor. We don't powder coat or paint it in our shop, we send it out for that. Everything would be done, just like it is where we are now, inside the shop that exists there. So there's no noise. We're not a retail shop, everything is 100% custom ordered. So there's not traffic and that type of thing. Which is why we believe it's a really good fit, especially for this neighborhood. But I would argue for, really for essentially almost any neighborhood in a C2 zone. There's a letter, I gave you a packet of letters that are largely just business owners in Boulder City. But there's one at the very end from Steve DeVita, who's the owner of Sunset Ornamental Iron, which is located in a commercial manufacturing zone. He is exactly the same thing that we are. I don't know if you're familiar with him at all, but if you are, maybe it might help. A little bit smaller than us at this point, he refers people to us often because he's getting ready to retire. But again, everything is done within a shop. We are at a location in Henderson on East Gate. I don't know if you're familiar with Craft House Brewery or, you know, the Las Vegas Distillery. Those things are right around us. And we operate every day right there next to them with nobody even realizing that we're there, because we're all, you know, inside and, you know, not a distraction or deterrent to anybody. And maybe I've said enough at this point already anyway. But our day looks like, our clients are divided about 50% between major home builders and private homeowners. So we get a call, you know, or they come through our website saying, you know, come give us a quote. We go do that, we order the stuff, we come back, it's made in our shop. And then we have a field team, which is about half of our 14 employees. They go out every day and go install these things out in the community. So really, there's, you know, even further, we're less of an impact because we're only about seven people that are on site. There's an, there's a, an automotive repair or automotive service stations are in allowed or permitted use within the C2 zone currently. And if I look at that, if I compare automotive service stations compared to us, they actually have more of an environmental impact than we do. I mean, if you, you know, if you just even walk into that type of a place, there's an odor. There's, you know, things they have to dispose of and chemicals they use to clean. We have none of that, and that is a use. And the neighborhood that we're looking to be in, oh, I realize that's not the point, but in that neighborhood, within a C2 zone, there's two people immediately to our south who have both received conditional use permits, who are Urban Jungle and RFN Construction, who again, you know, almost make more of an impact than we do. I think when they, when they wrote the commercial manufacturing zone, what they were thinking of, you have like Armor Rock and Ameri Tire up off of Industrial Road. Those are like serious manufacturers. You have the, Ameri Tire is, I think, as I read about it anyway, the headquarters and manufacturing facility, which produces over 300 different tires and wheel assemblies. So you can kind of, you know, you get an image of what they do. The other place makes polymer concrete structures. You know, those are serious manufacturers, which obviously you can't set next to, you know, some other type of retail business. We are not that type of manufacturer. And then further, when I looked at the master plan, just briefly, and this is a little excerpt from it, it says, "A strong, they were looking for a strong diversified economic base. The city should encourage the maintenance of existing jobs and the creation of new employment opportunities in the city to strengthen the economic base of the community and to reduce regional commuting patterns of its residents. Efforts should be focused on maintaining the city's existing base of businesses and on attracting new businesses to serve both local residents and tourists. Additional efforts should be focused on strengthening the downtown, which is recognized as a unique area of the community whose long-term health and viability are critical to the economic success of the community." I realize this isn't about us, but it's kind of, it's almost impossible, at least in my brain, to separate us completely. We have been in business for, my son has been in business for 10 years. But he started doing this, he's 40, he started doing this when he was 17 years old. And he's been, most of the people that work for us have been with him since he was 17. Last year, his revenues were in excess of $2 million. He's a, he will bring a a strong business to this community. He will be able to hire people. The people that work for us will eat lunch here and buy gas here every day. And they are the kind of people you want in your community. He will improve the looks of the building that he's in. And I realize this doesn't speak to every ornamental iron manufacturer, but it's kind of hard for me to separate it entirely. Yeah, I guess that's all I, I guess that's all I have. Do you have questions?
Any questions, comments? Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, thank you very much. It's funny, I was talking with Mr. DeVita's wife today, she does my nails. But I thought it was interesting that he supported the idea of a competitor. I did want to thank you though for mentioning that you do not do painting, because I know that, something that I was concerned about, if it were odorless and noiseless, what about the sound of cutting iron sheet or those hollow square tubes or?
It can be noisy, but it's all, it's all done inside. Like I said, it's, I mean, they will have, they will have the door, you know, the, what would be the shop doors open, just like we do where we're at. But when you're outside, you don't hear it. And like I said, where we are right now, there's- And like I said, where we are right now, there's the Craft House Brewery and other things that attract, I mean, they have like yoga classes and painting and those types of things, and we don't impact any of those types of people, much less the people that we would on Walnut, because it's all done inside, it's essentially noiseless.
And there's no chemicals used, no?
There is no chemicals whatsoever. We purchased the steel, you know, they will go out and do a drawing, let's say of a, an RV gate or something. They'll take the measurements, they'll come back, they'll order the steel. We have fabricators who then measure and do those things, and we have steel benders and, you know, cutters, and they'll, that's what they do, they just bend, they cut, and they weld. And then once it's all created, then our field guys take that product out into the field and install it. So there's no chemicals whatsoever. They will take it to be powder coated first. We use a company that's down off the backside of the strip to do our powder coating or painting. They'll do that and then go install it, but yeah, there's no, there's absolutely no chemicals whatsoever. All the steel is recycled that we don't use.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Hoskins?
Yes, I would just like to say that I'm impressed that of the 16 letters from the Boulder City businesses that support this, and I think that's very admirable that they stepped up for you, and especially Sunset Iron, which is, you know, want to be in the business with you, against you, or with you, or whatever, and I think that's very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. I can tell you, there's not one person that told me no. I didn't have time to get as many as I'd like, but there was nobody that refused. And Mr. DeVita and my son have been doing business in the same thing for a long time. He gives us jobs now that are bigger than he would like because he's trying to slow down, but we are definitely not competitors in that sense, yeah.
Councilwoman Adams?
Just to ask about some of the process, Mr. Mays. So the conditional use permits that, if we were to go ahead with this, conditional use permits can be subject, each condition for each site can differ from permit to permit, correct? So what would be considered a conditional use here might be considered, not considered a potential use at another location, is that correct?
Correct. So what would be part of the process is the Planning Commission would be evaluating each applicant on the case-by-case basis, and they may determine that one location is appropriate for the use, but another within the same zoning district is not. And they also have the ability to add conditions to the conditional use that the applicant would be subject to.
And if they were to find that those conditions were not being met, what is the process for, at that point?
There is a follow-up from the city to make sure that they come into compliance with those conditions and the possibility of exploring the revoking of the conditional use permit if they're not complying with the conditions tied to it.
And then these conditional use permits would come before the Planning Commission, correct? They would not come before us unless they were appealed?
Correct.
I think that, I think that's it. I mean, I have certainly visited a couple of the watering holes down in the East Gate area myself, and I would have never known that there was an iron manufacturing or fabrication, I'm sorry, ornamental fabrication going on in those areas. So I trust when you say that, you know, this is not going to be a problem. Obviously, this is, you know, we are talking specifically about the entire C2 zoning and not just this site, which I think is important for us to remember, because we might say, yeah, this completely makes sense here, but when we look at the bigger scale, you know, we do have to think, the decisions that we make do have a lasting impact, and we have to think about, you know, at a certain point, you know, there will be a new council that doesn't involve anybody here, staff that doesn't involve anybody here. So we want to make sure that we are making decisions that are best for the community. Personally, I don't see this as a problem, being that there are many steps to this conditional use process, that it allows for the community's input, for neighboring businesses to provide their input on whether or not they believe that this is appropriate for the area. So I will, I will leave it at that, but that is my thoughts on the matter.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We will go ahead then with the public hearing portion of this. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Fann?
My name is Glenn Fann, good evening again, Council and City Staff. I know that what you guys have decided doesn't necessarily affect what this business wants to do, but it sounds like, you know, in the future, it'd make their process easier. Just for what it's worth, a little bit of my background, I used to own a metal fabrication shop, I've worked in shops, you know, where a lot of metal products are made, and you'd be surprised at how much, you know, how quiet most of the stuff that goes on is. You know, if they're cutting large pieces of iron and stuff like that, like, so we mentioned square tubing, more likely to be done on a bandsaw, you know, and they're relatively quiet. The noise of the motor makes more noise than the blade cutting through the metal. And depending what you're doing, how fast you're cutting, you know, you're putting oil or water or something on it, cool it and lubricate it. The only thing that, you know, they, I don't know if they've, I've never been to their shop or anything like that, I don't know, but the noisiest thing I can think of that they might have, and there would be an iron worker, and that just makes a bang when it cuts, if you're cutting some half-inch plate. But, you know, most ornamental iron work I've seen there, maybe, might be cutting some quarter-inch plate. And that, and that amount of sound would be contained within their building, you know. You can hide places like that in a building and nobody, like the Councilman Adams just said, you'll never know it's there. You know, I mean, you know, if they're really going out hot and heavy and the doors are open or something like that, and you walk by, you might hear some noise going on, but you know, for the most part, a lot of metal working is really quite quiet unless you're doing some serious stamping. I mean, if you're working, you know, a GM plant where they're stamping out, you know, whole fenders in one hammer, you know, well, now that's gonna make a little noise. Ornamental iron work normally isn't that, isn't like that. So just for what it's worth, been around machinery and stuff, you know, for a lot of my adult life, and it's, for the small manufacturing, it's not really gonna impact, you know, the, I can't see where it's gonna impact the neighborhood, you know, any neighborhood or bother their neighbors and stuff. As long, if they run a, well, you know, run a well-oiled machine, shall we say, they'll be just fine in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no others, we'll close the public hearing, bring you back for questions. Mr. Mays, I did have one question regarding an application for a conditional use permit. There is a notification process to that, to the surrounding businesses or occupants?
Correct. With conditional uses per NRS, it requires notice to all property owners within 500 feet.
Okay, so again, even if this is allowed as a conditional use, should there be someone, in this case, this business, who applies for it? Any resident or business owner within that 500 feet then would receive a notification that the application had been made and would have an opportunity to comment or object to issuing that permit, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. The other thing about this, as I look through the uses that are already here, I see plumbing, electrical, and welding shops, product fabrication and/or assembly, body and fender shops. Okay, they missed ornamental iron, but I think they got pretty close on most of the others, so. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll entertain a motion then for approval.
I will motion to approve Bill Number 1866 with the findings provided by staff.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item, 13, is a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission for a mission statement. Mr. Mays, again?
Thank you, Mayor. So in the city's 2025 strategic plan, as well as in the Historic Preservation Committee's goals and action items for historic preservation, there is a specific action item that says that the city should evaluate a mission statement and present it to the City Council for consideration. This mission statement with respect to historic preservation efforts would be utilized by the community to help guide the community as it moves forward with the goals and action items that have been identified in both of the lists that I just mentioned. The Historic Preservation Committee evaluated different mission statements from across the country, and the examples that they were looking at have been attached as background information for review on attachment two. On December 3rd of 2019, the Historic Preservation Committee recommended the mission statement, which is contained on page 260, for your consideration, and I will read it in full. Boulder City is committed to promoting, preserving, and protecting its historic buildings, sites, neighborhoods, and structures that provides visual markers for the city's cultural, archaeological, and architectural heritage. So that is for your consideration this evening, and I can answer any questions.
Okay, and what we're looking to do, just to clarify, is adopt this as a mission statement with regard to the strategic plan goals of historic preservation?
It was a specific action item, both within the city's 2025 strategic plan goal, as well as the goals identified by the Historic Preservation Committee, which were presented to the council last fall. And so with the acceptance and adoption of this mission statement, it gives guidance to the community as we move forward with the historic preservation efforts.
And again, we're not modifying any existing committee mission statements or anything of that nature, we're simply looking at a mission statement for the purpose of historic preservation here in Boulder City.
Correct.
Okay? Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, I think we were discussing yesterday whether or not we could make a suggestion to, for a change of the wording of what was recommended. And in that case, what has disturbed me about this is the concept of a visual marker. There are people who are visually impaired, and I would like to see this worded as such so it talked about the sustainability of our heritage or a marker of some sort that doesn't necessarily need to be visual. Is that?
Certainly, it's at the council's discretion to make modifications to the mission statement.
Yeah, I read the other ones, the ones for other cities and those that were suggested, and they talk about the sustainability of the heritage and so on. It's just that the buildings are, the structures, neighborhoods, sites, and buildings are more than just visual. They're tactile, they're audio, they're, so, if there was a way to change it from, from that wording.
Anyone else have suggestions or comments?
No, I am just looking at that, and I do understand Councilwoman Bridges' concern with that because it is not always just about seeing, I understand that this isn't, but, you know, this is for everybody. So I'm just, currently, I'm just looking at this right now, I would, my immediate thought was that it provides cultural markers, but it says for the city's cultural, archaeological, and architectural heritage. So I'm just, I'm just looking at that right now, but I understand.
I, you know, I have a different view of that word than, than what Councilwoman Bridges has put there. As far as the historic preservation, when it comes to how preservation codes normally work, they don't apply to things that are not physical or architectural or archaeological in nature. And while certainly people who may be visually impaired are not able to see those types of things, as far as the tactile goes, that may change. If something has to be preserved, it may be that a substitute is placed in there. It may be that the items are not accessible. I'm just concerned that we don't get too far away from, one, what the Preservation Committee recommended here, but also in looking at any other factor that a person may have. You know, we, we may have people that are unable to access something because of some other physical condition that they have, but it doesn't take away that that's actually what most preservation codes go to, is preserving what's there, the buildings, that sort of thing. The history itself, the stories about individuals, that's certainly important to it, but that's usually not something that the preservation codes are going to apply to as far as preservation goes. So I, I think the fact that something exists, that is pretty much a definition of something being visual. And to say that that is somehow not recognizing the problems that some people may have with disabilities, I think that's inaccurate. I don't think that's valid, and I think the way this has been proposed, it's very short, succinct. I know that the committee, the Preservation Committee, certainly spent an awful lot of time looking at many different ones. Again, I have no problem with going with the language that's stated. To strike a word like that, I don't know that, that keeping it in there is any type of comment about someone else's potential disability. I think it's just a statement of fact that the things we preserve by preservation codes are in fact a real item that has visual qualities.
Well, I know some people who are visually not able to see, and you give them a description, we have some friends that, you and I help every once in a while, and you give them the description, and so they visually see that item, even though they don't, they can't see it, they see it within their mind. So I'm not sure that that word visual is really meaning, actually being able to factually see it. Do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, they see, they perceive it as you describe it to them. They don't actually physically see it, they see it in their mind. I'm not sure that that term should be removed.
Just out of curiosity, if we were to move forward with this language as is, and there was perhaps some comment from the community that they did feel that this wasn't necessarily appropriate, or they felt could better incorporate everybody, how would this process, would we just basically go back to the Historic Preservation Committee and say, we've heard some concerns? Would you guys be willing to look at this? Would it be that simple?
Certainly, that is an opportunity. There's also gonna be another opportunity for the community to provide input. The City Council approved a budget amendment, and staff is working with Historic Preservation Committee and also the selection of a consultant to help the community move forward with a historic preservation plan. And so there will be plenty of opportunities for the community to provide input into that process.
Councilwoman Foldon?
Thank you. So this, this was the strategic plan goal of promoting historic preservation strategy one, develop a mission statement based on state and national standards, and I'm sure they discussed it further, what the state and national standards were, but can you tell me what those were and how this, does this comply with those?
Sure. With that goal, I think the intent was to look at both with what federal guidelines are and the Secretary of Interior's design standards, but also to look at best practices from other communities. And so the Historic Preservation Committee did research in identifying other mission statements that met these objectives, staff did the same thing. And so as you can see throughout the different examples, that was the basis for the Historic Preservation Committee to look at accomplishing this goal.
Thank you. And it looks like they almost copied word-for-word a mission statement from Boise, Idaho, they just shortened it, where it's using the same language. And I do understand the concerns that Councilwoman Bridges brought forward, but I do believe that, that as a standard, you know, these are, we are talking about things that are physical and in our scene, so I think it would be appropriate. So I think it would be appropriate in this case. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just, I'll just add to this, to that point, that when I attend, you know, a rock and roll show or something like that with a deaf friend of mine, there are other aspects and elements to that show beyond music that happen that are just as enjoyable and pleasurable, but that doesn't take away the fact that there are audio elements to the show at hand. So there certainly are visual elements to historic preservation, to the architecture. It is what we see, whether it's roof lines and stuff like that. So I think, I believe we should be safe, I mean, we are safe to move forward with this, but I do, I do understand the concern in that if there were concern from those in the community regarding this specific language, I would certainly ask that they reach out to us, and I certainly would consider those, any, any changes to that.
Councilwoman Bridges?
I want to appreciate the, the comments, because I, I do understand. It was just something that, so it took me back when I first looked at it, and I appreciate everybody's feedback on that.
I appreciate that you noticed it, that you have the discussion.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I will move then that we adopt the language as a mission statement as recommended by the Preservation Committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mays. We will now move to item number 14, a presentation from the Utility Advisory Committee, and Vice Chairman George Ree will be making the presentation.
All right, thank you. Thanks for having me here. I should begin maybe by saying that I think I was adamant that written reports be produced because that's what counts rather than, you know, me giving you my opinions on things which don't necessarily reflect the members. So we've got a written report and the substance of it. That's, that's a document that's really relevant, that's been read by all seven members, and they had an opportunity to provide input. Nevertheless, here are just my impressions of what we've achieved in the first six months of this committee. And there are three items, I think, that, things that we got done. So the first thing was with the help of the Utility Director to bring ourselves up to speed, and to get information on the utilities, and to know what is known about utilities in the city, what is not known, what the uncertainties are in the numbers. I think we've got a better idea of that after the meetings that we've had. There were two other things we've achieved that were not easy to say very quickly, but were not immediately obvious to do, was to get rolling agenda items of, to be able to discuss timelines, because in order to get the information to you in a timely manner, we have to be able to place items on the agenda in a timely manner and work back. You know, if we give you our feedback on the capital improvement plan in July, it's not necessarily helpful. And so we achieved that. And finally, to find a method to produce written reports, because we're not supposed to meet outside the... Navigating, as you know, the open meeting laws, and I think we found a method, and although this report was produced by a subcommittee, and so if, if our new method doesn't work, we can go back to that method if need be, but it was viewed as a bit cumbersome. But anyway, those three things are what we've achieved. I'd like to thank Mayor McManus and Councilman Hoskins, who have attended some of our meetings. I think that tells everyone in the room that people are paying attention, and it's not just a bunch of residents having a good time on a Wednesday evening. And so I appreciate that. I think that, from my perspective, it's important. And so our immediate plans are to review the rate study and the five-year capital improvement plan, and submit a written report by the end of April. That's what we want to get done. And then in fiscal year 20, by the end of fiscal year 20, to review the four utilities, the four main utilities. And I view it as the idea that we provide an independent view of things, independent of the city, independent of you, so that there's an entity of qualified people who've looked at this, and here's what they think. And that's about it for, for this, and I don't know if you have any feedback. You're sort of our constituents in a very limited sense, or rather, let me see, which way does this go? Well, you voted for us anyway, so we're sort of...
We created your committee, yes. So in that limited sense. We have a little bit of say in it.
Yes. So any feedback or anything? Are we on the right track? Are we on the wrong track? I don't know.
Any questions or comments? And again, thank you for the efforts in preparing the report. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Hoskins?
Yes, I would just like to comment on the fact that you are, all work very hard, and I appreciate that. I think all of the council appreciates everything that the committee is doing, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
I will echo Councilwoman Hoskins' support, support for all the work that you guys are doing. I'm not able to attend the meetings because of scheduling, but I do try and watch them on YouTube. Thankfully, anybody who is not making it to the, to the meetings, you can watch them, so please do. There's a lot of great information. I'll be honest, a lot of it does kind of go over my head, so I do try and really, you know, dig down into what the nitty-gritty is to the best of my ability, but it is very impressive that we have a body of people that has the knowledge that you guys do to, to really help us make decisions up here.
All right, thank you. Anything?
Councilwoman Holder?
Yes, I just want to also echo those sentiments, that, you know, it is very appreciated. This is a topic that's, it's very in-depth, and I know that you guys are trying to catch up to speed on what's going on, where I experienced that as well on council. So it's nice that we have a group that can, can look at one topic and really dive into it, and I appreciate that and have that input, especially with our utilities. You know, we run our own, as everyone knows, and it's our city, and so it's, it's nice to have that, that extra in-depth look at, you know, how we're doing as a city in running our own utility. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Bridges?
I, I want to be the last to say, thank you for the hard work, and, and I'm glad you described the process of having to figure out when you have to have the items submitted for agendas, and open meeting laws, and quorums, and I understand that. And I, I think at first I was concerned that that might become a stumbling block of just how to get past that, so you could talk about the, the good stuff, get, get to the meat of it. And I looked at the items on here, and I'm, I'm very impressed. And I do not attend commission and committee meetings because I have a terrible poker face, and I would probably grunt or go yay, and so I just watch them on YouTube, so nobody sees my reactions.
I was going to quote the great Mick Jagger, which is a bit frivolous, but he said, "You can't always get what you want, but you get what you need." I think we have what we need in order to get the job done, so, yeah.
Mr. Ree, or Dr. Ree, before you go, a couple things, and again, I know that, you know, you've had all of four meetings so far. That's not a lot, but I think that the members that are on there have made a significant effort in doing a lot of work outside the committee meetings to understand a large amount of data that is out there. That's going to be significant, and that was my purpose, along with the late Councilman Harhey, in creating this committee, was to get that information out there to a group of people who certainly had more expertise, and hopefully some additional time to look at that. Our utility budget roughly equals our general fund budget. So it is significant for this city that we have an understanding of what is happening there, and certainly we have city staff to do that, but, you know, if we look at like an NV Energy, which of course is a much larger utility, you know, they have the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission at the state level, that reviews what the staff at NV Energy does. And I think that's important so that we get feedback on city council to understand what it is. I, I know that, again, it's been a little bit of finding your way with this since it's new, but to have this in place, I hope, is going to help us quite a bit as we go through these next four months of getting our budget ready. That's something that comes up every year, but seems to always come a lot more quickly than we might like. So, you know, I would just say that this report is certainly informative as far as what your committee has been doing. If you've been able to get a method to develop a report, and if you have not, I believe that might need to be a priority, but, you know, we will be looking for information probably the end of April as we start to finalize our budget for May. So, you know, that's not just for you, but for the committee as a whole, that, that probably has to be a focus for the committee as, as we go through these next few months. I know, too, we are in the midst of a rate study, and again, I think it's important that the Utility Advisory Committee have dialogues, and I know there was one presentation already at one of your meetings, but have dialogues with the consultants who have been hired for that to, again, help city council understand all the factors that might be involved with that. So I, I don't mean to correct Councilwoman Bridges, but I will be the last one to thank you for all the work that your committee has been doing. So thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I am very much aware that you were critical in forming this committee, as well as Councilman Harhey. I didn't want to tell my life story about how this all got started, to spare the audience, but I know the history, and I know the critical role that you've played, and, and as well as Tom Clements, we want to honor these people and all the work they did.
Mr. Clements did an awful lot for it.
All right, thank you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, as this is a presentation, no actions required. So we will move to item number 15, which is Chief Shea for the Police Department Annual Good evening. Oh, there we go. I'll try to make this brief under... I do have this, I also have the cough, so I'll try my best not to cough in the middle of this, and I want to welcome a fellow coastie to our ranks. This is the 1918, 2019 annual report, kind of a synopsis of what we do and why we do Well, maybe it won't be.
Michael turned it off.
What'd you do to this?
Broke it.
Oh, great. I can handle a pencil and a ballpoint pen. This is organizational chart, this is how we're set up, and what we have, we have 79 total paid positions, 37 full-time commissioned, one vacancy, we had a recent retirement. We have five part-time commissioned, authorized, three vacant. We have 16 full-time non-commissioned, 21 part-time non-commissioned, and two of those are currently vacant. One of the things I did is I did a staffing study of what we've looked like here in the department. I took us back to 1993, and you'll see the red 2005-6, that's what the department looked like before the more cops tax started. If you'll go down to 2016 budget there that's bolded, that's what it was the day I started. And you can see there were 30 commissioned personnel prior to more cops. The day I started, there was 28 personnel, five of which were under more cops. We're required by statute to maintain the same number of personnel outside of the more cops funding that we had prior to more cops starting. So we've slowly but surely, as the economy improved, brought our numbers back up, and we are one shy as of today, but are planning to rectify that by June. All this has been explained to the legislature, and they're perfectly good with what we've done and what we're doing. And one thing noted, too, the city, even when this is done, the city will not have added a general fund commission position to the city in 15 years. This is a synopsis of, you weren't, the city gives, the police department gives two briefings a year, one's in May and one's in December. The one in May is crime stats, but since you all, for the most part, weren't here, I wanted to give you just a brief overview real quickly of crime. This is UCR stats, these are the eight that are captured by the Department of Justice, and that goes back to 2002, and you can see where we, every year, what's going on. The one in red at the end is the last year that was compiled by the Department of Justice, and in May we'll have the updated. And you can see, we, we do pretty good, and it's pretty consistent. There was a significant drop in 2007, and that drop has pretty much stayed consistent when it comes to property crimes since then. However, that is a distinct minority of what most police agencies do. This is some examples of about 100 different categories of activity that the police department does. This is last year's. So you'll see that these are the different things they do and what they're involved in, and what CAD captures some of the data that they do during the year. And again, this will be updated again in May. So if you're wondering what these guys are doing out here, this is what our CAD captures. And one of the goals you look for in any police agency is you want to have non-directed time. Non-directed time, a time when they're out patrolling, looking for things along. So the larger your non-directed time, the better off you are. What you really don't want are people going from call to call to call to call. And believe it or not, we have some days that's exactly what they do, call to call to call. This is a chart that shows the rate of crimes per 1,000 people, compares Boulder City to the state of Nevada, to the nation. This is 2018. So you can see, we do really good there, too. And Security Baron did a, they come out with this every year, and once again, they've listed us as the safest city in Nevada. So when you look at our statistics and our data, our violent crime rate is .57 violent crimes per thousand, and our property crimes are 8.61. As a comparison, Henderson is 1.86 violent crimes per thousand, 1833 property. North Las Vegas is 10.15 violent crimes per thousand, 23.86 property crimes. So in Las Vegas, you go up to nine, 29.43 property crimes per thousand. So in our metropolitan area, our crime rate, which is our victimization per person, is significantly lower. And that's why we are, according to Security Baron, the safest municipality in Nevada, So as you saw on our chart, we've added some personnel, bringing our numbers back up. And what that allows us to do is it creates time. It creates time for people to go out and do things that most, have most harm to the community. One of the things that was frustrating on our officers was an inability to spend time working on narcotics enforcement. It's a very difficult area to work on, it's not just something you can do in a patrol car and think you're going to make a dent. Takes quite a bit of work and expertise and to do things like this. So we have two folks that had skill in this before, they belonged to task force, they've done one in Arizona, one had done it here before with DEA, and we decided to go after meth, meth trafficking, not using, but meth trafficking. So in a year, this is what they accomplished. They made 32 felony arrests for trafficking and delivery. They seized almost seven pounds of methamphetamine. They also picked up some heroin. Same time, they ran into a couple illegal grows, they brought in 365 pounds of illegal marijuana, some 245 grams of edibles, seized 13 firearms, some vehicles and things like this. This is two people in the course of a year, here. They weren't operating in North Las Vegas, they weren't in Henderson, they were working So they've taken, this works out to be about $250,000 worth of meth, over a million and a half of illegal marijuana. By the way, 453 grams equals a pound, give or take a little bit. They've, of these arrests they made, almost all of the people have been convicted with terms of four to 10 years. This is some pictures of some of the stuff they've done, some of the weapons they've seized, some of the drugs and cash. Up in the top picture, that's a portable identity theft lab. Some of the folks were doing identity theft, making credit cards, driver's license and things like that. That's just one of the storage lockers of stolen property. Crooks burglarize, steal, use that to buy dope sometimes, and that's just one of the storage sheds that they found. They cleared quite a number of burglaries and thefts just out of that storage shed alone. This is what a marijuana grow operation looks like. This is one of the ones in town here. This is being run by the Chinese, Chinese nationals, and this was just up the road here. They just kind of stumbled onto this one day. It's quite a sophisticated operation. So also in our department, we have civilian volunteers. Our volunteers this year contributed over 4,300 hours of time. They, they're involved in quite a number of programs, there's 30 of them now. They're responsible for things such as the You're Not Alone program, which helps with seniors, so if you have a senior that might live by themselves, you live out of the area, we go check on them, and we make sure everything's okay, and if things aren't, we coordinate through the senior center to get services to them. Elderly people sometimes forget to do some things like pay bills, eat, and things like this. We just check and make sure everything's okay. They do a neighborhood speed and traffic surveys, they go out, and one of the things that we'll do, we'll find cars going too fast, look at the license plate, write the people a letter. I know some parents have said, "Thank you very much," because it was my son doing that, and it's much nicer to get a letter from us rather than their kid getting a ticket, which of course costs the parents quite a bit. And it works out. I tell folks that when I was younger, back in my younger days, my parents found out all sorts of stuff that I did, I never could figure out how they found out, and this is probably through programs like this, so. We have eight volunteers also that work at the animal shelter. And through our volunteer program, we reinstated a chaplain's program. We saw one of our chaplains tonight. Their support system, in times of crisis, they're available to assist with death calls. They were... One of them was called out just this past weekend on one. They do death notifications. They'll do some counseling and advice for employees. And they are regulated. They have to pass what's called the lemon test, and it was established by the Supreme Court in 1971. And it means chaplains have to have a secular purpose. They cannot advance nor inhibit religion. They can't excessively entangle the government with religion, things like that. So police chaplains, they fill a niche, but it's not a religious thing that they do. They're really quite a resource force, and they help out a great deal, especially in this day and age. As you all know, police suicides, fire suicides, are on a pretty big uptick, and it's becoming quite epidemic. It's always been around. It's always been around since as long as I've been in police work. In fact, I had, over the years, multiple people that I know in my own squad that, you know, went home from shift and never came back from stuff like this, so they help with that. We have a traffic motors program. We started that back up. That's under the more cops tax. That's the money that's attached to the stadium. Boulder City gets money for that. They paid for two positions. They paid for all the equipment and paid for all that stuff. The major folks who work now with the Joining Forces program, Joining Forces is funded by the Nevada Office of Traffic Safety through the DPS, and it has officers from 25 agencies statewide that come together and enforce Nevada's safety traffic laws. And the five focus areas are impaired driving, seatbelt use, distracted driving, speed enforcement, and pedestrian safety. So it's in its 18th year. In 2019, the Nevada Department of Public Safety recognized agencies and officers for their work statewide. Boulder City was recognized as the Agency of the Year, and Officer Ian Hamm, he was recognized as the outstanding performer in three of the five enforcement categories And Officer Pete Wheeler, second-motor officer, he was recognized for his work as a coordinator and for exemplary enforcement and incredible actions to promote and support the Joining Forces program. These programs go... Every state has them, and Nevada's is very strong, and actually, we get a lot out of it. So people come here. You might have noticed a few days ago, there were some deputies here from Lincoln County working, and that was part of Joining Forces. Off-road, off-highway vehicle programs just started. We got some assistance from the state with a reimbursement grant program. It's pretty embryonic. It's mostly educational. It's not an enforcement thing. We're not going out and running down kids on motor scooters or anything like that out in the desert. The idea is for us to do an awareness and education program. And we just started moving into our next phase. We're going to increase our presence during major days and times when OHV operators are in the area. We've sent people to training classes. You just can't get in one of these things and drive around. We have to send them to special classes up in Winnemucca to go out and do this. So you're going to see them out a little bit more this summer, and trying to get out and passing out pamphlets, showing where people can go, where they can't go. And this dovetails into our officer who is assigned full-time in the Boulder City Conservation Easement under contract, Clark County. So they all kind of work together. Real heavy in this program has to do with preservation, ecological things, you know, eliminating destruction in some of the desert and some of the things that are going on out there. If you ever get a chance and want to go on a ride along with them in this, you'd be surprised what we find out there. It's impromptu shooting galleries and all sorts of things. There's a lot of stuff that's left out there. All the folks don't realize the school crossing guards are part of the Police Department. They're out there every morning, every afternoon, every school day, every kind of weather. They're great folks. They're all part-time employees. They get a real personal interest in what they consider their kids, and I kind of go out there once in a while and wander around in the morning when they're out there working. And I just wanted to kind of give them a little pat on the back. They're really wonderful people, and you'll see them out there every single morning, every single afternoon, and they're great, say, great folks. We've started a kind of a community program with our mounted posse and officers. These are officers that have their own horses, and they volunteers in the light blue suits are from the Boulder City Horsemen's Association. And they do parades. They do quality-of-life patrols. You can see a couple officers down there in the downtown area. People, really a lot of them, they're tourists, are taking pictures on the left and right. But they also have a application out in the outlying areas where we're dealing with some of our homeless issues. They can get the areas that we really can't get to very easily on foot. So they're a force multiplier out there, and they've taken parts of the city land and pied it off, and they're going out and doing patrols out there and just talking to some of the folks they're finding living out there. They've also done some interactive activities with metros, some different venues. They've gone through all metro's training, and they really... It's really kind of a positive program, pretty happy with it, and doesn't cost us anything. They provide everything. This is a video of one of our homeless camps. This is kind of what we find out there. This is the area just pretty close to the animal shelter. This is one of five that were in about a 50-yard circle, but this is kind of what we find out there and what we send public works out to clean up. Garbage, human waste, all sorts of stuff out there. There are quite a number of those out there. We were taking a look. This is a drone video, and what we're doing is we're looking at using drones, and this shows some of the stuff that's out on our hills. This is right up between Cascada and the Railroad Pass. You can see Boulder City Parkway to the right, and you can see the places that have been built. There's one. There's a couple more to the left. And the drone's going to come up on one construction here that's still in progress, where they've dug out a shelter and are starting to put a roof up. You can see that's dug out, and you can see the roof there, and there's a mattress and another place there. And off to the left, up on the hillside, there's a couple more. They found 11 encampments in that little area right there. We've just begun a security program. Sometimes you see it out here. It's pretty embryonic. It has a number of facets. First thing we did is we established a security committee, which involves all the departments, and we're looking at what we need to do in the city and what is reasonable. So one element involves security cameras. If you look around, you'll see some cameras around the city hall here. They haven't worked in years, most of them. They're just on poles. So we're looking at updating what camera systems we currently have. We want to bring them all into a single system. We have some at the parks. We have some at the airport, and in some places, we have none where we should have some. At the same time, we're assessing what we should be adding, and then our electronic access system, our key card readers you all use, that system is aging out and needs to be updated. And in some places, we need to go to a dual authentication system. They have readers out now that if you're walking down the street, your data can be sucked off onto a machine in a guy's hand. So we're going to do some dual authentication, which means some of our places that look like they might secure really aren't. And we've added some security personnel, marshals, and private security, as well as some enhanced procedures to provide some reasonable security presence for some specific events and public meetings, along which you see everywhere else. I say, "I wish it really wasn't necessary. It'd be nice if we didn't," but things have changed in our society. And there are several layers of it. Some are obvious, and of course, some aren't very obvious, but what we're trying to do is reasonableness, given our circumstances and our abilities. Another part of the department is our Public Safety Communications. That's our dispatchers, and it's staffed with eight dispatchers. They handle about 32,000-plus phone calls into our 911 center a year. They dispatch out about 21,000 calls for service, and this year, they're going to begin the new Nevada post-certification training that the legislature enacted. These folks are here 24 hours a day, seven days a week, every day. We never close. They're the voice that many people talk to when they call for the city after hours around weekends. They're the ones that are kind of the calming voice for people who call and are under great stress or duress. You can imagine some of the calls they get. Imagine receiving a call from a frantic parent on an unresponsive baby, or witnesses to a horrific collision or catastrophic injuries. These are the folks who receive those and deal with that. They sometimes do CPR over the telephone. They have telephone CPR until our medic crews can get there. They're wonderful folks. It's a very, very difficult job, and they bring order to chaos and hope to replace despair. And at the same time, they take care of us, because our men and women, too, sometimes get a little excited, and they'll calm them down also. They're wonderful folks, and we owe them a great deal, and I can't say enough of them. It's a part of the police operations that frequently get forgotten. Those of us in uniform, people know about us, we sometimes forget about these folks that really make things work. Animal control and shelter operations, we've had some dramatic changes there. As you all know, before I came here, you had some real difficulties. They get several thousand, about 6,000 to 7,000, calls for service for animal control in the city a year. We have about 800 animals were received into the shelter last year, 700 adopted out, and about 400 animals were spayed or neutered. We have a 2% euthanasia rate. All our euthanases are based on a veterinarian. Basically, the vet says you have to do it. So the typical rule of thumb to determine whether a shelter is a no-kill is that it saves 90% of the animals that come in. We're at 98%, right around there. So we're doing very, very well there. The staff there are great. The volunteers there are great. I can't say enough about them. I say, "What they told me, what matters most to our folks is saving every pet that's healthily and treatable." It is a shelter, and the shelter is just that. You bring them there to be taken care of. So I think they do a wonderful job, and for a city our size to have that many animals come through there every year is just amazing to me. And they save animals that in other places would be euthanized. Our vet bills have gone up because of that, but I think that's what we're here for. So some of the new things for 2020, CareTrack. We're going to be initiating CareTrack. CareTrack is a program for elderly Alzheimer patients or for autistic children. And what you do is you put a small little receiver on their wrist. Looks like this. This isn't one of them, by the way, but we're going to be going into partnership with the Veterans Home. They're very interested in this. And when you have a walkaway, in our environment, especially in the summer, if we don't get them quickly, we are not going to find a live person. Under this CareTrack program, up in Washington State, we had about 360 people in our county on it. We would find people on average of about two and a half hours once we heard that they were out. And our volunteers will go out and they'll replace all the batteries and things like that. So they'll be coming online. It's very, very inexpensive, and it's really a good thing to have. And I know the other police departments here in the valley are pretty interested in it. We're going to be going to online crime mapping. It should be starting right around April, I believe, so you'll be able to log on. It'll tie into our CAD system, and you'll be able to see what kind of activities are going on in our neighborhoods. It'll show what's happening, where and when. It won't be specific, but it'll say like residential burglary, 400 block of this street, or disturbance, 200 block. And if you have any additional information, call in the Police Department. You'll see them all over the country. So we've been working on this for quite some time to get this up and running. So this will be coming online right about April, it looks like. Community and Neighborhoods program. I want to enhance the Neighborhood Watch. It's kind of fallen off over the years. We have a position that's coming online that's going to help us with that. The person that's going to be the backfiller's in the academy right now. It also allows us a little closer ties with some things at St. Jude's, and it's a position that the city used to have, and it went away in economic downturn, so we're going to be bringing it back. And that's really all I wanted to say. I wanted to go pretty quick. Is that quick enough? My New York sometimes gets going. I get talking too fast, so I was trying to be careful.
Well, thank you, Chief. Questions or comments from City Council? Councilwoman Holder?
I just want to thank you and all the staff and volunteers that make all this possible. You know, it's one thing to see a statistic, you know, this crime's happening, but you guys are out there every day dealing with those things. And, you know, in the past, I've worked in that field as support staff, and so I see it's, you know, you guys do those hard things so that we can go on in our daily lives and not see all that, and I just appreciate all of that that you guys do, put your life on the line daily so that we can have a nice life here in Boulder City. And that goes for the volunteers as well. They're the extra eyes out there and ears, and, you know, they give their time willingly to help make Boulder City the city that it is. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I have volunteers. They have 30 volunteers just for the police side, and another eight at the animal shelter for a city this size. It's another bragging point I have when I call up. And my mother's a volunteer in the sheriff's office up in Washington. She's 89 years old, and I call up her and tell her, "Well, it's going down here." So I'm extremely proud of our folks here, and I couldn't be happier, I say. It's a wonderful place. And I wish we could take credit wholly for the low crime stats, but it's really, a lot of it goes to the citizens here. They are not afraid to call us when things don't look right, and it makes a big difference.
Councilwoman Bridges?
Hi. I also want to thank you, and I looked at those crime rates, and like you said, I know you're talking about it being, taking a village to do that, but I'm very impressed, and I appreciate the fact that I can go out at 11 o'clock at night and take the dogs across the park and feel very safe. I also live two blocks from the police station, but... No, but I do. And the animal shelter, and I do have a question. When you see those developments going on in the hills, you know, somebody's actually digging up a housing foundation and putting a roof on it, how do you handle that after, once you know about it?
You're going to hear about that right after me from Ms. Calloway. She's going to talk about what we're working on and what we're heading towards. I think one of the things that we were surprised over and we're still finding is the scope. It was far, far more than we knew.
So it was more than one guy in a cave?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. She'll talk about that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, I appreciate everyone's work, and I enjoy the column in the newspaper talking about what's going on. It's entertaining.
Councilwoman Hoskins?
Yes, I had the opportunity to work with someone, work with the organization that you have for volunteers, You're Not Alone. And one of your volunteers is here tonight, and I think she should stand up, and we should say, "Thank you."
Thank you.
That would be Sharon Newby, I believe.
Yes. Thank you very much also for helping me out for the past several years in my association. And I think I'm well-known by almost all the policemen, not for tickets.
I wasn't going to say anything.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Adams?
Yes, thank you absolutely to you and your crew for all the hard work you do. Big shout-out to Ann and her crew at the animal shelter. What they do is incredible. Luckily, I don't think all of the cops know me. At least, I hope not. But I did want to get back to regarding the narcotics activity. I see that the methamphetamine, about seven pounds, looked like were confiscated. I recently read a report talking about the, while a lot of the focus has been on heroin and opioid use, that we've actually seen a large increase in methamphetamine use and trafficking in the southern Nevada area. Is that something that we are seeing here in Boulder City as well?
Absolutely. I sit on the Hyde Abord, the high-risk drug trafficking area. So, right, and when our folks, when we sat down and said, "What do we think was causing the most harm here?" They immediately said this. And so when you're talking to street guys and gals that are out there every day, they know what it is. And so all I did was say, "Okay, we'll go get them." And that's exactly what they did. And kudos to them. It takes a lot of work and a lot of sacrifice because they were... Their shifts go away, and they have to make themselves available quite a bit. And they do a great, good job. Wish I could take credit for it, but I can't. It's them.
And then with regards to the heroin, it says 2.6 grams, but there is an asterisk. What is that asterisk?
That was from another presentation. I don't remember the footnote that went with that. I'm sorry, can't remember.
That's fine. And I'm just now getting these questions while we're here. They just kind of came. Heroin use, obviously, there's a big difference between those who are addicted and users and those who are selling and distributing throughout the community. You know, I'm naive to what the numbers mean. It's 2.6 grams. You know, what is, I believe it's, I quickly just researched, it looks like 200 milligrams is a minimal lethal dose. So 2.6 grams is a substantive amount, I'm assuming. Is that correct?
Correct. And it also depends on how much it's cut and what it's cut with. You know, I'm not, I was never a narcotics officer, I never, I didn't do that kind of work. But I do know that I've worked in some areas, I've worked right on the Mexican border, I've done drug interdiction missions in the Caribbean, where we would pick it up by the ton. So there's tons of this stuff out there. But in our community, again, we wanted to go after what we thought was causing the most harm here. And one of my overriding caveats was, you're going to do the work here. I don't want to send somebody out and have you up in North Las Vegas or, you know, down around Fremont Street and all that. If you're going to do these things, you're going to do it here. And that's exactly what they wanted, and that's exactly what they did. So all these things that happened were here. One of the arrests were made out of here, but they were bringing it in and doing the sales here. So we went after them at their base.
And I commend that work, absolutely. With regards to heroin, a lot of people, they don't get addicted to heroin because it's the first drug. It's usually because they were taking some type of opiate or pills or prescription and they end up there. Was, were there any, is that, would those numbers be factored in here, those who are distributing pills illegally or anything like that, that obviously should not have been?
Yeah, well, those aren't in here, that's, they're gonna, their next group that they're going to concentrate on, we're going to sit down and talk about that. We'll be doing this in the next few weeks, where they're going to go next and what we're going to go after. They're going down to a regional training class in two days, where they're going to be meeting with all the regional folks on what their areas of concern. We're concerned about fentanyl. Now with our narcot, two narcotic sniffing dogs that we have, it does help out a little bit because we do get trafficking through this area, especially with the I-11 changing. So I don't know exactly, fentanyl is really causing a problem right now. And certainly up in the Reno, that corridor up there, it's becoming pretty bad. We haven't seen a whole bunch here, but next year we'll show you what we've done.
Thank you very much. You know, and I will just say that I do have a friend who suffered from addiction for a while, and they will say that, you know, in, you know, ending up in the slammer was that thing that helped turn them around. However, that is not necessarily always the case for everybody, that it is the wake-up call, it could put them. So I would just, I hope that you, the department always keeps in mind that there is a big difference between those who are addicted and those who are distributing and, you know, feeding on that, on that addiction and that things, because that is the biggest thing to remember.
All those 32 arrests were trafficking and sales.
Thank you.
Those are the people we're going after.
Thank you.
Chief, I just have a couple of quick things. One, you mentioned early on about the more cops tax, and I think that's important to realize that that's kind of an outgrowth of what happened down in the valley, that there was a need to hire more police officers. So there was a vote to, of the citizens to increase sales tax. But that also brings with it a responsibility that as a city, we have to fund that. We can't say, "Well, okay, we're the safest community, we can cut back a little bit." That was an obligation on the part of the city to say, "We're accepting that money and we will then maintain those levels." And as you noted, we're still down a position, is that correct?
That's correct. But we have a plan, we will not be adding people, but we will be meeting that number without adding any personnel.
Okay. And I think you had given me a number of how many officers have been added for Metro? I mean, it's in the hundreds that have been added as a result of this.
I believe under more cops, they have between 600 and 700 under the crime prevention tax. I don't remember how many hundreds they have. It's that way for all the agencies, Mesquite, everybody. All of this in the valley were included in the more cops and crime prevention tax.
Right. It is a sales tax that only applies in Clark County.
Yes.
Okay. Another thing, the animal shelter, you know, you had mentioned that the euthanasia rate's down to 2%. I think that no-kill designation is somewhere for 5%. That also allowed for a grant last year of $25,000 to the animal shelter because of the care that they give to the animals and caring for them. And again, I know you alluded to it, but it's a significant turnaround from the horror that occurred out there, so that's a real compliment. And the volunteers, you know, I love volunteers here in Boulder City. We see these folks out at special events, we see them out, you know, if there are any traffic issues, things like that, and patrolling. They're out, you know, driving around, looking for signs of things that are occurring that shouldn't be occurring. So fantastic job, thanks to all of them, and really appreciate the fact that we do keep that safest city designation. Thank you. And we'll now move to item number 16, status update from the homeless task force. This is Julie Calloway.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Boulder City residents. I am Parks and Recreation Manager Julie Calloway and Chair of the recently-formed homeless task force. I am here to present a brief update on the progress of the task force.
Julie, where is it?
Common shares? PowerPoints? City Council?
This is usually the time in the show where I would provide some stage banter if I was having technical difficulties with my guitar.
I'm thinking we ought to get the Jeopardy theme.
The task force was created as a result of community concerns regarding a more visible presence of homeless individuals in our community. In August, City Manager Al Noyola established a homeless task force comprised of 11 city employees to create recommendations to address individuals and families experiencing homelessness in Boulder City. The committee came up with five recommendations, including a proactive enforcement of city ordinances, community engagement, updating city codes, evaluating progress, and future items for consideration. The immediate task force actions included improving park hour signage, so public was aware of the hours permissible for park activities. Police officers canvassed the desert to get a better understanding of the situation and respond to citizen reports of abandoned campsites. These campsites were found to be abandoned and required trash removal. We have been tracking the related costs to these actions. We've communicated with residents about the creation of the task force and kept them up to date on pertinent issues. The task force has collaborated with local service providers to learn more about this vulnerable population. The committee has met with the emergency aid of Boulder City, Help of Southern Nevada, and the VA. Task force representatives have toured the Las Vegas Courtyard Homeless Resource Center and Catholic charities of Southern Nevada and participated in a webinar from rethinking homelessness. The task force is updating some of the city codes specifically relating to public urination. The task force has had some challenges, including a huge learning curve for staff members regarding this population. We have spent the past few months absorbing as much information about this vulnerable demographic so that we can make recommendations for the health, safety, and well-being of all of our residents. To date, staff has enforced existing policies, ordinances, and city codes focusing on unlawful behavior. Another challenge has been identifying the location of homeless camps. Residents have reported unlawful campsites or individuals living in places not meant for human, for human habitation, and officers address the situations. This is challenging Boulder City with the land mass, as it is a lot of ground to cover. The task force realizes that people experiencing homelessness is a challenge of national proportion, and there is no quick fix to resolve the issue. The task force is engaged with how other municipalities are addressing homelessness in their communities. Boulder City has limited homeless services, so we must educate ourselves on services available in Clark County in an effort to connect individuals experiencing homelessness in our community with local service providers. The homeless task force has a lot more to do. Members of the committee and local police officers will be participating in the homeless census on Thursday. This annual event is a requirement of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development throughout the country. The task force will also be looking at policies and procedures moving forward. Items for consideration include handling of abandoned property and camping in undeveloped land. We will be utilizing the assistance of Help of Southern Nevada on future police ride-alongs as a proactive approach to assist those appearing to be homeless. The committee is exploring additional staff training opportunities and will continue to review its efforts and communicate with the city council as well as the residents of Boulder City. The task force merely started a few months ago. We have met the challenges set by the city manager with compassion and dedication. We will strive to continue to serve the residents of Boulder City to make a positive impact on the community. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions from Council? Councilman Adams?
So just in, when I was doing a little bit of research myself on the subject, I noticed that Clark County recently released some numbers and figures regarding the homeless population, in that some of the leading causes of homelessness were loss of jobs, mental health, drug abuse, illness, and/or medical bills of that, related to that nature. Would you say that that is, that it falls in line with what we see within the homeless population here within Boulder City?
It does seem to be consistent across the country. As of right now, we do not have a tracking mechanism or an intake for that type of information from the individuals that we have come across in town. However, it does seem to be the trend across the country.
And then there certainly does seem to be a lot of emphasis on code enforcement and making sure all of that, that we are handling in that, with those concerns. And not that we shouldn't be concerned, but making sure that our codes and ordinances are being enforced. However, you know, that is only just one side to this aspect. You know, enforcing the law doesn't necessarily help bring people out of the circumstance. And in fact, sometimes it can only help to create that cycle where they come in and out of this, of the circumstance. So how is it that, how, I understand you guys are new and you guys are just getting there, but at this time, are there any considerations for that aspect and how we move forward in those matters?
Absolutely. And I will say that that particular topic has been of very heated debates among our task force. Specifically, we definitely realize that we cannot work our way out of this epidemic by, by law enforcement alone. Putting these individuals in jail is not helping them, just not, just, just like merely providing food or a bed in one night will not really help the problem as well. We have realized that it is really wraparound services that are needed for these individuals because it's not just a one fix for them. So while we're trying to approach them, just like we would, you know, a Boy Scout or Girl Scout group that's camping in the desert, that's not allowed. So we're trying to treat everybody equally and, and actually, one of the members of the task force is active in our court system. And he said, you know, "There have been individuals that have come through the court because of unlawful actions that have brought them there." And through that, and through the counseling and the help of the activities at the courthouse and the steps that they had to follow to stay out of jail, they are now in housing, they have been able to be helped, they are, have been provided services. And so while, yes, we realize that arresting them is not going to get them out of this situation, it can also somewhat help the situation.
And then the story that went the rounds on the news, even the AP picked it up, Mr. Roman, who was living there in the mine, added. What is his current status right now?
From what, from what we understand, he does have a secured apartment that he can afford through Help of Southern Nevada and will be starting his lease in March.
And then obviously, it seemed that there are potentially other people living in potential, similar situations. We're looking to address those in a very similar faction, I hope?
That is correct, yes. With the same care that we did, we will use the Help of, Help of Southern Nevada to see what services are available depending on the individual's needs.
Councilwoman Holder?
Thank you. So early on, I think the original thought was that we had between 10 and 14 persons experiencing homelessness in Boulder City. Has that number changed since the outreach and the desert searches that have been completed now?
I would say that we don't have solid numbers. As I mentioned earlier, our census count is on Thursday. Now whether or not on that particular day, because it is a point in time count, whether or not, you know, we'll see more or less, it can fluctuate, you know, just because of where they are and what we see and what, you know, groups are going out where. So we're hoping the numbers have gone down. The visibility of individuals appearing to be experiencing homelessness in town has reduced since our efforts that started at the end of the summer. And obviously, we've cleaned up several encampments, but it's an ongoing cycle.
Okay. So we don't have an estimate, right, at this point?
We do not.
Of how many? Okay. And so then, we probably don't have then, kind of touching on what Councilman Adams said, is that of those who you encountered, we don't really have an exact figure on why they're experiencing homelessness, whether that's through job loss, drug abuse, you know?
Correct, because we don't have staff that is specifically devoted for, you know, acquiring that personal information.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, I just, thank you for the, for the work. Now, you're involved in the, in the committee, also in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, is it, is what's going on here just of large, is a matter of scope?
Yes.
Yeah. I just spent a weekend in Sacramento and...
It's a whole nother scope.
That, that's a, we were walking down one, one street, J Street, and every doorway, there was somebody sleeping in every office building doorway, and it was kind of a, an awakening experience. I was curious about that encampment that, that was shown from above. Now, did they just go out and collect everything and shut it down or just leave it? Or how do you handle that on an individual basis? Somebody sent, set up a, it looks like the foundation of a new home.
And nothing has been done with that foundation right now. It did not appear at the last time we've had staff out there that there was anyone currently residing there. So nothing has been done with that particular area. And as far as the trash left behind and the debris from encampments, that is handled through our Public Works Department, where they'll have to go out and what they can do, they will do. What is beyond their scope does have to be hired out. For instance, if it is hazardous items or confined space, they've had to hire out for those types of encampments that they've come across.
Okay. Yeah, it seems like the, the problem goes over the, the drug issue, the, I think an interesting fact, and I don't know if you, you talked to Tom Tyler over there from Emergency Aid, but the requests for short-term lodging is way down than previous years. And I'm wondering what effect that has on that, whether that would lead to lower, lower homelessness, a lower count or a higher count. For a while, it, it seemed like a lot of people were needing a night or two in a hotel, and suddenly that was a lower number and...
You would think that would be good, but I'm not necessarily sure that that necessarily means that it is.
Yeah, maybe those people are no longer just looking for a night or two, they're on the street. So it's, it's not an easy task. I give you a lot of credit for, for getting involved in this. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, when you talk about the, the number of people, I think that's always been underestimated here for Boulder City, just because of the terrain and everything we have. I know I certainly hear from residents that even places that the police and public works have already addressed, it seems within a short period of time, they become occupied again. There are a couple of things that I think are very important, and I'm afraid... There are a couple of things that I think are very important, and I'm afraid that this committee is getting pretty far down the line without policy considerations by city council. And I think that's important that before we get things entrenched, before we get practices established, before we get procedures established, that the city council be given the opportunity to develop the policy and not have individual actions by city staff establish a policy for us. This is a county-wide issue. Many of us serve on other boards and committees and commissions that work with these issues. I think that Boulder City always needs to be cognizant that we are part of Clark County. That's oftentimes a benefit for us. But we need to be seen as part of whatever the effort is and not as an organization or a community that has simply decided how things are going to be. And then every once in a while, we reach out to Clark County and say, you know, we need help with this or take care of this for us. So I think that's important, and I don't think we've gotten that. I see a lot of steps that are being put into place, and yet council has really had no voice in the policies that are being established by those procedures. So that's an important thing that I think we need to address. Just in general, on some of the things you mentioned, you know, a lot of folks say, well, you ought to throw them in jail. You know, some of them may be committing criminal behavior and that's the path. But recent court decisions make that not permissible anymore. And that's something that's important. It's also important to realize that when you jail someone, you know, our prisoners, if they're arrested on a misdemeanor and sentenced to jail, they're housed up in Lincoln County. And as I recall, when we approved that contract, it costs us somewhere around $200 a day to do that. I've been told that at the Clark County Detention Center, that runs about $140 a day for the taxpayers to pay for. So these are not small things when people think that, well, let's just arrest somebody and we'll put them in jail and that's going to solve the problem. The taxpayers pay a lot of money if that's the direction that has to be taken. But we've also heard from the federal courts that, you know, you cannot criminalize someone's status. In other words, if they're homeless, that's not a crime. If they're committing crimes, that's a different situation. But I think that it's important that folks realize this country right now is seeing a rapidly expanding homeless population. And for Boulder City to say, you know, well, we don't have a problem here or we're going to make it someone else's problem, that's probably not a realistic way to look at the problem any longer. You know, it may have worked 30 years ago, give somebody a bus pass, have them go on somewhere else. That may not be the approach that is going to be best. I know that's not the approach that the committee is looking at. But that gets back to, we need to look at the policies that we have and make sure that we're moving forward in the way that this city council believes is best. So I appreciate the efforts. I know you've been, not just the committee, but you personally have been making efforts to reach out to some of the services there in the valley. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you very much. And I just want to reiterate that as of yet, there have been no policy changes.
Well, you know, again, I don't want to get into a back and forth on that. I'm just expressing what I see occurring. And I think we need to get to a point where the council gets more involved up front so that we have this. I understand you're gathering information, you're identifying resources, but I also see actions that are being implemented. So we need to all stay on the same page. This is a very important issue for the community. And again, this is a national problem that we also have here in Boulder City.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that will bring us to item number 17, appointment to the Regional Flood District. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This appointment is for the Clark County Regional Flood Control District Citizen Advisory Committee. That committee is comprised of 14 members. The county commission, each county commissioner appoints a member and each city council appoints a member. The members serve for two years, two-year terms and may be reappointed to additional terms by the appointing agency. Mr. Jason Gross has served on behalf of the city for the last four years, so he's served two full terms. He is interested in continuing to serve. The Flood Control District states that he has become a valued member of the committee. And so you can appoint, reappoint Mr. Gross or you can appoint somebody else.
Thank you. As the representative from this council to the regional flood, it certainly appears that Mr. Gross has a kind words from the general manager of the regional flood control. However, you know, we get into this situation of these appointments coming up and only having, in this case, I guess, four days to make identification. So I'm going to make a motion to hold this in abeyance until our second meeting in February, and that will give us an opportunity to further evaluate this. Anyone care to second that?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
That would allow, I believe it was in March is when the appointment is up, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, the term does not expire until the beginning of March.
Okay, so, all right, perfect.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That brings us to number 18, city managers' report. Mayor and council, all items found on the reports are routine matters and there's nothing additional to report. Thank you. Any questions from council? All right, we will move to our last public comment period then. This public comment period, you may speak on any issue. Again, there is a limit of five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. Tyler?
Tom Tyler, I'm on the Emergency Aid, and I would like to talk about the upcoming meeting on February 4th, how important it is for citizens to come and do their opinions about the new STAN-TAC report. The new report was finding that there's a better use for the water and power building where Emergency Aid is located. And I've been assured that we will be taken care of, but their suggestion is to move us to a building we don't even own. And I'm a little worried about that. And I truly think that the water and power building is being used properly by Emergency Aid. Their suggestion is to move the museum library over to there. And a few years ago, I mean, the museum or the whole Boulder Dam Hotel was in super problems. And we spent a lot of money getting it back up to par. And one of the things was the museum, to bring people to the museum, to the Boulder Dam Hotel. Now they want to pull out the museum and put in more hotel rooms. And I just think that it's kind of a waste of money. Plus, it's a nonprofit. I'm not sure why even that was under the study, how they have a suggestion for nonprofit to move out of an area that they own. I do believe that they do own the property, correct? So I would like everybody to come in the meeting, and I would love to get together from Emergency Aid to explain our situation and as far as the homeless, too. That I think that if I could talk to you on an individual basis or as a group, that I could shed a lot of light on the homeless as well as the stuff with STAN-TAC and that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Sineken?
Again, Neil Sineken, I'm glad that you have replaced the former city council. In my opinion, they would have done great damage to the city by the direction and the way they were going. So I wish you to keep that in mind. With historic preservation, it's always been very important to me. I was on the original Historic Preservation Committee when we started it in 96 and it morphed into what you have now. That there's a new mission statement is not really that comforting to me. I haven't seen staff do very much of anything on historic preservation since 1996. That a CLG, Certified Local Government, was just formed and all the money that's been wasted over the decades by inactivity by staff and lack of preservation and lack of money spent, I find that, you know, not comforting. And I feel it's up to the city to stay on staff and appoint somebody and make them accountable for this. What I saw at the planning commission meeting, my gut feeling, and I had to go home and think about it, I thought it was almost stacked against that zone change by the way that it was handled and by the errors. So I hope that somebody is appointed and accountable for historic preservation and similar to the building that Mr. Noella tore down behind the hangar because of it being abused. There was a little house back there and it was left to decay and the door was left open. I hope that the filtration plant has better protection. It was vandalized about three weeks ago. Does anybody know that? The window was torn out and somebody either broke in from the inside or outside. I wonder if there's a way to put an alarm system or something more. I pulled the police reports and I didn't find any police reports on vandalism. So I hope more goes through than just another statement because everything you've said is already in the master plan and for 20 years, nothing has been done. I would like to see reviews. The last review of staff, it sticks in my mind, was September 20th of the year 2017. It's typical and customary that staff gets reviewed and it's a public process. I'm aware and you're aware that there's problems in the city clerk's office. I get copied on the same emails that you get by blind copy. I've had difficulty with the city clerk. Materials are withheld. I get untruthful statements. I get accused of making veiled threats, whatever that means whenever I make comments. I don't like the contracts that Mr. Noella and Mr. Morris have. It takes, you can't fire them for six months before an election and six months after an election. That gets worse in terms of the golden parachutes they have. It goes from a six-month buyout to a ninth-month buyout. I don't see any accountability on Mr. Morris's performance with regard to the Hunt case, vindictive prosecution, the Nancy Nolett case, other cases. I'd like an accounting for that. I'd like some accounting for harassment reports that I've made, and I'm aware that you've received them also against Mr. Noella in directing staff to be vindictive towards certain people that they don't like. The city council is responsible for that per the charter. I would like some kind of accountability and a review. I've asked Ms. Petlier for two years for just basic accounting on the filtration plant to know what it really cost the city to keep that building because Susan didn't have any information and it was germane to the meeting. It's germane to me. I've asked Diane again after two years, and I hope that I get that. I've asked Mr. Noella under a public document request to provide his utility bills, which I'm entitled to see. He's claiming that he's a resident of Boulder City, and I'd be really glad to see that he is per his contract. I would like some accountability and a review. That's always been done in the past where the public has a right to have accountability and review. The contracts I see with Mr. Morris and Mr. Noella are outrageous. They were put together by the last city council, and I feel that they should come up for review as soon as possible with accountability. The report was made by the finance department where the numbers didn't add up, and Mr. Fred Volz has said that there's $20 million that don't seem to be accounted for. Whether that's true or not, it deserves a response. I haven't heard any. If there is, I would appreciate hearing where $20 million, he feels, isn't accounted for properly as such. The council is responsible for all of this. I would appreciate to be involved in reviews of all of the departments and that the public know. And again, I do appreciate your being in office.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mrs. DeShane?
I've got kind of a little bit of a list, but I'll be quick. First off, the last meeting, I had questioned why it wasn't an open meeting law violation when the city didn't get the September Park and Rec agenda and stuff published. I received an email from Lorena, the city clerk, about a week after that, and she explained it to me. The reason it wasn't a violation was because they had physically published it or put it up in the, probably the city's, the senior center and the library, because that's usually where you find it. And they also had published it on the state website, which she sent me the link for. They were having problems. It was a technical thing with the city website. That wasn't why it wasn't published. And so therefore, it was not an NRS violation per the law. So I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't want everybody thinking, you know, they had dropped it, but she did let me know this, you know? So I wish she would have told me that when I first brought it up a few months back. Okay, the other thing is, I want to know what's going on with that gate across the street. I realize that it were going on a year since he was, Mr. Gambino was told that wasn't allowed, it was against our code. In September, I know you guys gave him some grace so he could sell, put his house up for sale and that. As of now, he has not put it up for sale. Someone different, not in his family, is living in the one next door, and the gate is still there, and the gate is closed all the time. I think it's time to put some enforcement behind it. I realize he had some specific problems because of a child, and I understand that and I'm sympathetic, but we're going on over six months and it's been over years or going on a year since he was told not to do it. So I think it's time to enforce it. The other thing is, I was disappointed you guys didn't put the review or the contract for the city clerk, the city manager, and the city attorney as I requested. I would like to remind you that we have an election in November of this year, and then we have another election in June of 2021. So you're going to fall into that nothing can't do jack six months before or six months after. And I think this should happen before their contracts hit that two-year limitation, which is February 27th and February 28th. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. Fann?
Good evening again. My name is Glenn Fann. At the last historic preservation meeting, there was a couple of reports and some discussion about the airport hangar. I know right now, there's some, city council is looking at some possibilities of how the hangar is going to be used and such. But if those all fall apart or something like that, it was brought up that the city itself could probably use a large building for warehousing, some of their equipment and such, some of the large spools of cable, et cetera, you know, whatever they need. Because it would be easy enough for them to put, you know, an unloading ramp next door to the building. Where already, it already belongs to the city. It's not in that bad a shape. It's big enough to be a good warehouse. I think, you know, that might be another plan to look at possibly. Put it to use. The city would be using it, the city would maintain it. Most people just think it's kind of a cool building to look at. You drive down Adams, there's this big hangar sitting out there. It's kind of cool. And we could maintain it and the city would use it. We'd get benefit out of it because we wouldn't have to lease or buy or build additional storage space for, you know, for the utilities people. Store all the extra stuff there, you know, just, just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment?
Matt Reagan, Boulder City resident. As the hangar was just, the old hangar was just mentioned, I can't help but think of fond memories of being a 15 and 16-year-old sweeping that old hangar out. And, you know, just anyway, just wanted to share that with you. So first of all, I'd like to express some gratitude in the interest that you, at the January 23rd airport meeting and the hangars. There were quite a few things that were asserted that I have, that we have to take issue with. I've now spent the last two days researching various issues. And some of them were, I mean, for the instance, the one was, what does the FAA have to do as far as the concerns about airport funding? And which is commonly called AIP. It's Airport Investment Program. Now, the FAA does a very loose request. Now, some of the things that they say, and it's on FAA.gov, that is imperative, is obviously that there's some stability in the airline, in the airport. You know, it has financially feasible. So clearly, if the airport was underfunded or not charging enough or giving free things away, they weren't using the airport as properly as far as not using it, having a wood shop or something outside of aviation. So I wanted to take issue with that one. So it's, and then we go into the other issue of the finances, where you had a cost of labor. And then it just, where did that number come from? And then when it was balanced before, you had $200,000 to labor. Clearly, that number has to come from something. And then it brought into, does city staff just come to this podium and make assertions that are not factually correct? And is there some sort of feedback and accountability? You know, I recognize you all are very busy people. And the problem comes is you have to rely on people coming to this podium and they are speaking correctly and factually correct. And that I think for whatever reason, and I'm not quite sure, I don't understand this, but I live in the world of facts. They have to be correct. And first of all, I'd say, as I'm an airline pilot. So I think that it's quite obvious that an airline pilot has to rely on facts. And I equally say, your job is just as important and you also have to rely on facts. And it should be some way that if someone steps up to this podium as city staff, that they should be held accountable for it. Somewhere, there's got to be some feedback. And so I think we all should expect that they speak accurately. I think Chief Shea set the gold standard. I mean, as a layman, obviously, I don't know anything about policing, but it was clearly impressive. He was in command of his facts. He clearly made a great presentation. And I don't think that's what we got here in January 23rd. But first and foremost, or I guess the most important thing is, again, I'd like to thank you again for expressing your interest. I think there's a lot of room for compromise here that I don't think we're really even talking. I think your job would be easier if, I think there's plenty of room for the airport users to be able to compromise and say, yes, we want, we can be satisfied for whatever thing and we can also satisfy the necessary revenue enhancement that is obviously necessary to run the airport into the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing no others, we'll close public comment and move to council reports. I think we'll start at Mr. Adams' end this time.
I will just say, I had our Board of Health meeting last week. We're still in the process of looking for a new chief health officer. The subcommittee that was formed gave a little bit of a presentation on some of the outside contractors, I guess, that would help us with that hiring process and who they were looking at. So that's about where we're at. And they obviously briefed us on the coronavirus and all sorts of that stuff. So lots of fun stuff going on at the Board of Health.
Councilwoman Hoskins?
I would just like to say that the State of the City address was a great inspirational speech by our mayor. And I would like to thank all the staff. And there were a lot of staff that worked on this and they did a fantastic job. It was a very, very lovely evening. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bridges?
Let's see, yes. First of all, I do want to address the State of the City. First of all, I was impressed at how well-attended it was. And it was a, it was a great experience and I think you did a wonderful job. I think the city was portrayed in quite a good light. And even though I get to look at this stuff all the time, I was, I felt like somebody who was, who was learning, who had an opportunity to see us as a whole and what's going on in our city. And I think people appreciated the presentation. Secondly, I went to the Southern Nevada Water Authority and it was pretty much about just the ongoing business of what the authority does and signing contracts and updates. So I did that. I went to a debt management commission meeting where we approved a bunch of money for Henderson to do some stuff. It, I look at those numbers with all the zeros and it's kind of overwhelming. And I always think it's funny that, especially the water stuff. And then we sit there and then we turn around and vote on the debt management on the water. And, but it all is, I think I'm impressed because of the council, the debt council that shows up and the people that get up and talk about the value and they talk about the numbers and the finance. Number, money doesn't seem to be lent out, or bonds offered lightly. And so that was, I'm pretty impressed with that. Now, I want to share for a minute something very interesting that happened this evening because before I came here, I went to the meeting of the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, of which the first meeting I went to, I understood we were going to disband. It was five to five, five to five, five to five, and nobody was going to rest until it was six to four, which it did. So we had to figure out how to tease out all the ongoing projects and who to offload them to and its legislative work. And so I went to the meeting tonight to figure out, they were going to figure out what to do. Instead, they tabled all of the legislative work that needed to be done. And it looks like there may still be a Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition because the vote, there's a new committee, a new coalition. There are a few new members. And it was decided seven to two to table the decision to figure out how to dismantle the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, which means that next meeting, we could actually vote to undisband, to put back together with new material and a new meeting with, with the people involved and the consultants and Mr. Purdue. And so that was a very interesting evening I had today.
Councilwoman Fuller?
Well, wow. I don't have many board reports, but I just wanted to say that there are been some, staff has been really busy with updating a lot of things on the city website. So for instance, there's the Open Finance Portal, where you can go and check that out and see the finances that are available. And that, just to keep up with the latest happenings, if you're not on social media, there's a way that you can subscribe to the news carousel and you can get email updates of the city agendas that are coming out or on events that are happening. So I encourage you to check that out.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate everyone's kind words about the State of the City. You know, I had the easy part that night. All I had to do was get up there and talk for a while. I really do compliment city staff, Madam City Clerk and your staff, all the work that they did with the decorations and all of that. Mr. City Manager, Communications Manager, Lisa LaPlante. I know that I caused all of them a great deal of concern because they were working on so many details. And I'm like, you know, they're like, can we do this for you? Can we do that for you? And it's like, I got it. You know, I got it. So again, I do appreciate the kind words. But more than that, I appreciate all the efforts of staff to make it a very successful night. The pavilion never looked better. And again, I appreciate everyone who attended that night as well. As far as committees and boards and things like that, I did attend a presentation last week from the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority at R&amp;R Partners, who is the advertising agency. You may have seen the debut of their new advertising campaign, What Happens Here Only Happens Here. That's, you know, it sounds very simple, but I can assure you, it cost a lot of money to come up with that. And they really have an amazing campaign set up for this. You know, this R&amp;R Partners has been doing this for a number of years for Las Vegas. They know their stuff. I'll guarantee you that. They know their stuff. They're also looking at how that campaign can benefit Boulder City. So we'll be looking at that with city staff, some of the folks from the business community. You know, how can what, how can the millions of dollars that are being spent on that campaign also benefit Boulder City? Something that went by in our consent agenda earlier tonight was a grant from Firehouse Subs for our fire department training. You know, too often, things like that are considered routine. But I just want to recognize Firehouse Subs for the money that they granted to Boulder City for that particular item. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming this evening.